Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May 15, 2018. It's 9:00 a.m. This is the regular meeting of the Taos County Board of Commissioners. We thank everyone for being here today. Hereby call this meeting door or call the roll.
Chairman Ferber.
Present.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Here.
Commissioner Omero.
Present.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Okay, everyone would please stand. Commissioner O'Donnell has set up Marissa Martinez, who was our final substitute, to be here with us this morning for inspirational promotion. But she's not here yet, and I would ask our treasurer, Susan Trillo, if she would leave us off with some words to start the meeting in the right order.
I'd be glad. I'd be glad to. Would you hold on for your gifts so we can pray for the Lord God Almighty? Heavenly Father, we just come before your presence this day acknowledging your sovereignty, acknowledging your greatness as the creator and the goodness of our lives. Father God, we bow to you this day as we come before you in this commission meeting, Lord. We just pray supernatural wisdom, supernatural understanding. Those are gifts that you bestow on us, Lord God, that we might be able to conduct the business of government on earth. Lord God, your word says that it will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Father God, let us mirror everything that we do here on earth as it is in heaven. We draw from your grace and your mercy this day. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing, and Mike would lead us in the pledge.
Let me introduce the United States of America and to their Republic in full which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is a bit of an agenda. We have one deletion. Item 9B will not happen. So we need to delete 9B. Presentation from Bill Passman of the North Dakota Hospital of P. He has an emergency this morning.
Motion to approve with the deletion in state vice.
All seconds. Motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Call the roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Ferber.
Yes. Next item on our item 6, words and recognition. Item A is a proclamation for public safety and first responders month. This will be presented by Mr. Manu Cordola.
Morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Thank you all for being in the audience. Public safety and first responders are very important to our community. Couple weeks ago, we had dispatch week. Last week was detention officers week. I think EMS week is this week or next. So what we wanted to do was kind of lump you all together, even though we're grateful for each independent department and all that you all do. But I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation for public safety and first responders. Whereas Taos County Public Safety and First Responders work every day to help the residents of Taos County and our visitors enjoy the routines of their daily lives in a safe environment. And whereas Taos County employs professional staff for E-911 Dispatch, Emergency Medical Services, Fire Services, Office of Emergency Management, Sheriff's Department, and Detention Staff. Without them, it would be impossible to attain the foremost goals and achievements that make Taos County a safe place. And whereas the Taos County Board of Commission recognizes the sacrifice of these brave men and women of our public safety departments and first responders who demonstrate their unmatched selfishness and their service in the utmost stressful situations. And whereas the members of our emergency service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas the members of our public safety departments and first responders, where their career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours in specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas Taos County's E-911 Dispatch, Emergency Medical Services, Fire Services, Office of Emergency Management, Sheriff's Department, and Detention Staff have never refused their county's call. So we, the citizens of Taos County, wish to express lasting gratitude to these special men and women of our community. Let us show our appreciation by honoring all our public safety and first responders by giving them extraordinary gratitude they so rightly deserve. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of Taos County, New Mexico, that the month of May 2018 shall be known designated and set aside as Public Safety and First Responders Month in Taos County, New Mexico. Thank you. Thank you all for everything that you do for us every day.
So that proclamation will get signed and displayed.
And I think we have copies for each department. So give each department a copy of that proclamation so you guys can post it. Once again, thank you guys, and thank you for those that were able to be here today. We really appreciate it, and we know that it's not easy to even come to a meeting to be recognized. So thank you for your time this morning.
Okay, next item, your words and recognition. Vice Chair Gagos, I would ask that we take this item.
This is a presentation of certificate of achievement to Josh Ferber for winning the 2018 State Club Championship. Who's that? Foray. Foray. We have a presentation for you. Would you like to take a picture with us? There's, you know, I don't think any of us state champs have heard of our career, so. This is a certificate of achievement that certifies this certificate awarded to Josh Ferber. Congratulations on winning first place in the 2018 Mexico State Club Championship for Foray. Thank you, sir.
As he is dad and head coach O'Donnell taking this picture right here, you guys saw on paper also, and it's colorized for this. This was a birdie putt on the last hole, which was a very difficult hole, which sealed it. This young man worked very hard, not only at that tournament, but many hours, should have liked in a test. They both spent time on the driving range, but one gets better and the other one is trying to get better. But very proud of my son. It's my honor to. Congratulations.
Way taller than your dad. He's already.
No, he's not going to get taller to be able to let that happen. It's too late.
You're taller than everybody.
I know, I'm taller.
I did beat him like about a month ago. Really, too.
Back to school. Careful, we'll take a test. Next item, item 7, citizens concerned. Any citizens wishing to address the county commission today on an item that's in the agenda or something that's on your mind? We ask that you do keep your comments to five minutes or less. If you would like to address the commission at this time, please come forward. Mr. Philkey, I got to cut into your time because you were late today.
Hey, thank you. Good morning. It was a real joy coming in this morning, like it usually is. Taos has a new way of coming into town that most people aren't even aware of. When all that congestion starts happening at Ace, we get ahead of it. We turn at the safe brush, come up to Chumisa to what I call the Bygones Pass. It's the Salazar Extension, beautifully done road, and nobody's on it. But it's 30 miles. Is the sheriff here? 30. It says 30 miles an hour, but it's a 50 road up to the Bygones Pass anyways. Thank you.
Don't clean up, Philkey. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, again, thank you all for being here. Commissioners, next item is approval of the minutes, first being the April 17, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes.
Move to approve. All second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the regular commission meeting minutes of April 17, 2018. First, call the roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Ferber.
Yes.
Item B is approval of the May 1, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes.
So for approval.
Motion and a second. Court call the roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Ferber.
Yes.
And last is the May 2, 2018 special meeting minutes.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Ferber.
Yes.
Thank you, Timmy and Sheed, for getting all those together. Item 9 on your presentation, item A is a presentation on Bill program grant, which replaced the Tiger grant under the Federal Transportation Department. This will be presented by Mr. Joe Sanchez with the speech.
Commissioners, thank you for inviting us here today. County Manager Cordola, we appreciate the opportunity to present the 40L today. And so further, what we're just going to talk about is some of the general perspective of what the bill and the structure grant process is, the projects that qualify, just the general procedure. So as you all know, Bill replaced Tiger. Tiger's been a very successful infrastructure grant program for the United States, but also local governments. So just a second slide. Bill initiative was advertised with this notice of funding and opportunity. So a little moment change or change, they used to refer to these as a notice of funding availability. So they're now referred to as NOFOs. So the acronym is actually Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development. And it's a competitive grant program. The NOFO was issued on April 27. Project information form is a submittal for Bill and is due July 19, 2018, and is due by 8:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time. Opportunities are the levels of funding. The Bill program is actually funded at $1.5 billion. Each state cannot receive more than $150 million, and the max any single grant can be is $25 million. It does allow the planning grants in total of $15 million, so that's a total for the whole country. Excellent. So the grants themselves, they can't be less than $5 million or more than $25 million. There's a little caveat in there that's not okay. The $5 million top of the grant is actually $6.25 million for urban areas. They have to, they're 80/20 match. Rural areas can actually be funded 100% if you qualify as a rural area. Minimum value in rural areas is $1 million. There is no statutory minimum for the planning grants, so what that means is that the application is sufficiently qualified, and it meets all the criteria that they've identified. You can actually, in theory, you can qualify for all $15 million. In practice, that probably will not happen. The DOT, United States Department of Transportation, must equitably assure that there is a geographic, an equal geographic distribution of projects, okay? So they have to be shared across the whole United States. If you think about that, they also point out some other features in there, but if you also look at the total number of funds available, $150 million divided by 1.5 billion, you can see that they're pointing at regional projects. So some of the administrative requirements, obligation occurs when a selected applicant and the DOT enter a written grant agreement. So prior to the written agreement, the applicant has to satisfy the planning and environmental review requirements. There's no waiver on any of the deadlines, and those are regulated by section 2 of the NOFO. If you receive a bill grant for a component of a project, then the entire project may be subject to the federal evaluation criteria. So those criteria can be more stringent than local review criteria. Obligation of the discretionary grant funds, they have to be obligated before September 30, 2020, and they have to be paid out, liquidated, to a grant due by September 30, 2025. So liquidated means spent. The project is complete, but you've completed all the requirements for closeout of your project. So those are scheduled items that people need to think about. Next slide. So the eligibility requirements. Eligible applicants obviously are states, local governments, tribal governments, transit agencies, NPOs, and other political subdivisions. Joint applications are acceptable, but they must identify who's going to lead for a joint application. A joint application, of course, being between agencies or even states. So those things are possible. Cost sharing or matching, it's 80% in the urban, and it can increase for rural up to 100%. The match funds must be non-federal sources, and they do not include proceeds from new bond sales unless repaid with new revenue. Cannot cost match share accounting from other federal grant programs, cannot count previously incurred costs or previously incurred funds towards match for any project. So if you've done pre-work on a project, you can pay for it, and you can use those funds as match. Eligible projects are identified in the NOFO in the actual class law. So there are highway bridge and other eligible projects under the United States Code Title 23. Total transportation is also eligible under Chapter 53, Title 49 of the United States Code, and that can include passenger and freight rail ports. Interval, this can include land interval as well, not just port. They have to have independent utility. Independent utility is a NEPA term. What that means is that the project can stand alone by itself and function as an individual project. No other project is necessary for that project to function. The last item there is that planning, environmental feasibility, and other pre-construction activities of the transportation projects, those are also requirements. So you have to look at it in terms of, if you're looking at it to be shovel-ready, then you have to complete the planning requirements and the NEPA requirements. And the planning requirements obviously are your local coordination issues with your RTPO, your local RPO, your local planning, your ICIP plan, then the NEPA process itself to have your environmental clearances, and also right-of-way. So those are identified as planning requirements for the grants. Next slide, please. So the application limits. Each applicant, each lead applicant cannot submit more than three applications. There's something unique about this program in that you can do a program of projects, but the applicant has to demonstrate the ability to generate additional non-federal revenue. They must also submit an application for each project within the program and describe how each project is part of that program. And you also have to demonstrate the revenue in accordance with section 2.18. And you can't submit for, the applicant cannot submit for a program of projects if they don't meet these requirements. Okay, so there are qualifying criteria. If you can't demonstrate that all your projects are related and that you're not able to generate your revenue, then you can't submit. If they don't, they're not reviewed process. When they're looking at your applications, they'll just qualify, and you won't get considered for review. Next slide. So in terms of submissions, you have to use the required forms and attachments to submit to grants.gov. Some of the forms that you have to submit are the standard 424 form, and that's a general office of accounting form that everyone's familiar with. They also have a 424 CD, which is the budget information for construction programs. And then you have to follow the recommended project format. So you have to have a project description, a project location grant fund, sources and use of project funding, and merit criteria, and then of course, project readiness. Along with that, you have to have a detailed statement of work, a detailed project schedule, a detailed project budget. So there are going to be time costing money, right? The three stools, the three legs that make up your project stool. You have to satisfy all the selection criteria or the merit criteria. So there's safety, state of good repair, economic competitiveness, environmental protection, quality of life, innovation, partnership, non-federal revenue, demonstrated project readiness, benefits cost, and geographic diversity. Next slide, please. So here are some key items related to this, and these things aren't apparent until you read through the requirements of the NOFO. You have to be registered in grants.gov, you being the agency that's going to submit the application. And that process can take two to four weeks, okay? You must do outreach for key stakeholders and have mature planning. What that means is that your project that you want qualified for, if it's going to be a construction project, you need to have already entered in your ICIP or plan on your entered in your ICIP, and also in your RPO planning body, okay? So there's a process associated with that. You also have to do the benefits cost analysis, which includes the full costs of developing, contracting, operating, and maintaining the proposed project, and include an expected timing of costs in proposed categories. Each applicant has to be registered in the system for award management, that's SAM's, you're always submitting the application, and you have to have a DUNS number, a CAGC code, and all that. So everyone here knows what DUNS is, but it's a data universal numbering system, and again, it's part of the SAM system. You have to comply with the general SAM point of contact requirements for organs, e-business, authorized organization representatives, et cetera. The apply function in the grants.gov portal opens June 4. So even though they have the NOFO issued at April 27, you physically cannot enter grants until June 4. So they have a planning period themselves where they advertise, make available scheduled webinars and training items, and then they open the portal for submissions. Now, if awarded, the applicant must submit quarterly progress reports along with that SF 425 form. They also have to report and collect on the project's observed performance with respect to relative long-term outcomes. So if in your grant you say the value of this project is for economic competitiveness and it's also going to support emergency providers, you're going to have to measure that through time, and you're going to have to continue to submit that. And they have an auditing control interface that you have to enter that data into. So it puts a lot of tracking and administrative effort that goes into these now. And so the tracking system is actually FAPIIS. And there's other, it's just a, it's a performance reporting system. FAPIIS has two other components in it, so it has the actual awarded grant process, and then it has the auditing feature with it. So you continually have to be doing administrative functions to track these items in accordance with the criteria that you've established in the grant. So this closes our presentation. It's a great program, Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development. It is competitive, it's a discretionary grant, maybe it does have a sunset. And it's not, it's not a typically obligated source of funding from US DOT. You have to committee. Commissioners, thank you.
Do we have any plans for anything in the future on these bill grants?
Chairman, Commissioner Blackenhardt. Something that we're considering, we're trying to, I mean, we're talking about this. We also have to have a road that's, if we're going to build a road into a business park as an example, that the business park would one day generate grocery receipts tax, that would qualify. So we're just trying to go through the planning stages of what road would even qualify for an economic incentive. If you agree that the NOFO is more, I think the federal government is using this as an incentive program to incentivize growth in businesses. So we have that thing that we need to overcome, and also, it's not really mentioned in it, but to receive federal funding, we still have to complete our ADA policy, and we also have to complete our Title VI policy as well. Those are both in draft ADA, we're further along, but that's one of the requirements to receive federal funding as well.
Right, so obviously, this year, maybe possibly next year. Blueberry Hill qualifies? It's a big ticket item.
It's one of the ones I think we were talking about, that that may be qualified if we, and Joe Francis is better than me, if we can move residents to and from work and argue that's a major factor for to move citizens to their places of employment. I thought of making that argument for coming over to Medio as well. So this is almost, well, it is shovel-ready. All we're lacking is the takings.
All we're lacking is the easements. You mean the right-of-way.
Right-of-way. Easements and the takings of the county and the town need purchase.
Right. And Commissioner Ferber and myself would ask White's or Congressional delegation to help us with Medio. So should we think about Medio, since we're pretty close to the project shovel-ready, and then it might be something we could apply for in 2019? Or should we keep with those plans that, you know, seem to be funded? And switch to something like Blueberry Hill?
Mr. Chairman, there may be worth us giving the technical try in this cycle, whether we're successful or not, if we can co-work a building with the bill.
It starts on July 2018?
It is almost ready, and it's been engineered. I think the hard part will be identified matches, because we can't use any previous spent money as a match anymore. So that's kind of a sticky point, and we've got to make sure we have all the matches that are required when we can. Preliminary work is no longer considered a match. So we could look that further, and maybe bring it back in June and see if it's something that we can pursue.
What does our representative think about WH Pacific? Is that a realistic goal, knowing what you do about what we're doing?
Well, coming over to Medio is definitely a reasonable choice. You just may need to make sure that you adhere to the evaluation criteria. And if you notice it already, it only says that you have to liquidate it, so you can show a clear schedule, or it says you're going to have it shovel-ready, and a timeframe is going to qualify you. So even though you may have, even though you may not have all your, all your easement information identified, if you put that in your schedule of development, it'll become part of your grant application. If they don't, they'll evaluate it fairly.
If they don't, they'll evaluate it fairly.
You got seven years, right? Seven years to get the project built and audited out. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the new manager, how much money do we have available for that at this point?
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, this cycle of LGRF funds, there's going to be $699,000. The stating that Exco did grabbed each of the DOT district's initial funding. So in total, we're close to $699,000. And we, it's our staff recommendation to put that into Camino Medio. Traditionally, last year was a good year for us. We got more than expected, and all the years were about $150,000. So it's going to be a long time shot with the $699,000 we got.
And how much money would we need to register? Because we're not necessarily working with the town, there's no collaboration. And so how much do we need to finish the county part?
We don't have that estimate right now. The engineers would like the town and the county to continue as partners, at least through the easement and the land takings portion of it, since that was a part of the project. And then they could break off construction into two separate phases, the town phase and the county phase.
So what will it cost to be able to help any of those areas?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers for you today.
We don't, we don't have any money for that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, preliminary numbers we had received a few years back was about $180,000, I believe. And we had set some of that aside the last two budget cycles, but we hadn't had the opportunity to spend it. So, I mean, we.
And so what's keeping us from moving forward on this?
As Mr. Haddam mentioned, the engineer would prefer we could continue to work with the county to complete the takings, to complete the easements and that part because we've been working up to that point with them. So that's kind of what we're at this point to see if we can get that part completed. We have identified where we most likely need to take on our side, which is around the Chamisa intersection. I think that's the greatest area of takings. Other than that, the rest of the engineering is, besides overlay, it's preliminary drainage issues. And so our side isn't an easy task, but it's also not overly complicated. And we're not taking too much space. It's mostly around that Chamisa intersection.
And so what about the State Road 240 intersection?
That has not been engineered. The engineering, because that was such a complicated intersection, the decision was made by the town to engineer just north of that intersection to just south of the other 240 intersection. So that one has not been engineered, that would be completely separate.
One of the things that I would like to see is, so there's no idea how much money we're getting in the work of Blueberry Hill on the county?
Well, roughly, I mean, we have a rough idea because the project is roughly 50/50. And the total estimated cost a few years back was going to be $4 million. We can estimate roughly $2 million. We hope that working with the engineering directly gives us a possibility to maybe cut that back a little bit. You know, there's a few places we feel we can maybe bring the engineering back. And so, but roughly $2 million is what we've been working towards. That's our goal, try and fulfill that.
Not just the county?
Just the county.
And they gave us, and one of the meetings I asked about the intersection, part of the side of 240 and Medio, they gave an estimation because of the land takings and rework of the bridge and all that. So they were just a rough estimate, it was close to $6 million just for that.
Because I, I know that we're thinking Camino Medio, we're also thinking of Blueberry Hill. But I'd also suggest State Road 240, there's been a number of accidents on it. And it is used as another shoulder for a port right in from the south end of town to the north end of town through Blueberry. So it includes all of that.
We have to partner with the state of that.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell? But it's a 5.5 minimum, right?
6.25.
6.25, oh yeah, you explained that little technicality, it's 2.25 million. We don't need that much for that road. Let's be include the intersection. Yeah, and then a shovel-ready.
For, I think. Blueberry Hill would make, in my mind, a better project because I think we're closer to $4 million to construct it. What I would like to do with that, we do have the, 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 we're looking into doing a design build on Blueberry Hill Road because I think it would be better served. There's some areas that don't need to be engineered that we can overlay. There's certainly areas that do need to excavate and local pavement and lay in new pavement. So I think doing it that way would have a better bang for a dollar to be designed, build, the project versus outright doing a full reconstruction of it. And so it's one of the things I would have been looking at.
I know bike paths really bump up the cost, but that's such a great bike route. And I think it should be considered also. You know, especially if you're able to qualify for a bill grant, and I think bike path could be afforded.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Haddam as well that Blueberry Hill Road would probably be a better candidate for this type of funding. And I would also suggest that, you know, we lost a lot of opportunities, public funding opportunities on the middle road due to the fact that we tried to collaborate with the town and it's not working. They haven't moved as quickly on it as the county has.
Definitely not their priority.
It's not their priority, although it is, it's definitely a road traffic for a lot of the citizens that live in that town.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. So can you, can you give us also what the projects?
Program of projects is, is an eligible element of the build discretionary grants. They all have to be related and have to actually write individual grant applications for each project in the program of projects. And you still have to comply with all the evaluation criteria. And that includes the cost benefit analysis that goes along with it. So it's possible, but it's a complex process.
So my question is, the Pillar Bridge is on the ICIP for many years, it's on the NBRTPO list. Have we determined who owns that bridge?
No, we haven't. That might be something I might put, get along to working. Mr. Sanchez did work for DOT for a period of time, so it might be something that we might test into looking to.
Because if it has to be $6 million plus, that bridge would cost at least $3 or $4 million to rebuild. And my question is, can we have, we have a number of bridges. Can we not lump those together as well to reach that $6 million threshold?
I don't believe so. I think it would, like, we'll just have to be interrelated. So as an example, I think you could work on John Dunn Bridge as well as the road up to John Dunn and the west side of, the west side of the road, because that's all interrelated. But just to go and get $6 million for Taus County Bridges, that would be eligible because we would have to be individual projects. And then that five criteria that Mr. Sanchez mentioned, you would have to demonstrate that for each one of those roads, each of those bridges, excuse me.
So going back to the Pillar Bridge, it could be interconnected with the roads on the other side of the bridge? Pillar residents?
Correct. If it was a pavement rehabilitation, pavement, bridge rehabilitation project, worth $6 million, yes, you can make that qualify.
So what's the recommendation as whether this is worth applying for? And again, could we apply for Camino Medio, Blueberry, and Pillar Bridge?
So the element to consider is where you are in terms of your planning requirements to clear those elements, right? So if you haven't done all your EPO, if you haven't done all your administrative level planning with the RPO, the ICIP, and then the jurisdictional elements associated with that. And if you have not acquired right-of-way, then you're going to have to consider that process before you actually develop discretionary grant for another type of projects. So that's a, that's a criteria you have to meet.
There's planning grant?
There is, there is a planning grant. You can, and the planning elements are clearly identified in the, in the bill NOFA. So you can consider those elements. And in terms of a project, and typical development criteria is common practice, and the county does a good job of it every day because they have the work of the type of this. But you, you have to go ahead and consider planning, design, construction, maintenance, and operations, right? So those elements are all part of the build application and the benefits cost analysis. But you can, you can put things together and approach them creatively. You just have to follow the full process and understand the time requirements associated with it. It's complex. I like to look at things as doable. We just have to comply with the criteria. And I don't, you know, I don't want to put words into Mr. O'Donnell's mouth or anything like that. So it is, the county does a great job with it every day because of the limited budgets that they have. You just have to consider the full process.
Well, I know the Pillar Bridge is on the NBRTPO list. It's high in priorities on our ICIP. Would that require NEPA? I mean, maybe that's something we could move forward in planning grants. But I just want to know what's realistic for us to apply for or if we don't.
You would still need NEPA clearances, and you would need additional permitting for your 401 and 404 permitting for working in the waterway. So there is still NEPA associated with that. And there will still be cultural resources and biological aspects to incorporate also.
So what do you recommend?
Honestly, I would recommend that we have to sit down with Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Cordova, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Chavez, and walk through each of the roads that we're considering. I think Blueberry Hill makes a lot, makes a lot of sense. We need to settle the Pillar Bridge once and for all, it was the counties or the states. And that's a separate issue from applying. We're going to look at the level of effort for the next two months to get us qualified and submission. It might be better to apply for a planning grant and pursue that aspect. We're not going to meet all five of that selection criteria. Economic development, I worry about us qualifying for that one as an example. And then also worry that we haven't completed our ADA and Title VI plans, the two independent plans. So those are some of the hurdles that we need to overcome in the next two months.
Well, if Blueberry is not on the NBRTPO list, so we have to get that on the list. We have to get the projects that we want on that planning list of NBRTPO. Is that correct? That's one of the criteria?
So what, one of the elements, Commissioner, one of the elements that they did identify was mature planning. And what they're alluding to is that, yes, in fact, it needs to be in your local planning documents.
And it isn't, Blueberry isn't either, as Camino Medio as far as on the, what we usually call the type of grants. But it is on, the Pillar Bridge is on, that's why I keep going back to, because it is on the NBRTPO list. It has been for many years.
At least 18 years.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I think we could look into it further. What I would worry about is qualifying it with the economic development piece that's now required when built. I don't know how that generates additional economic development. We could look into what that could mean. I guess that would be the challenge I see on the bridge.
But I do agree with the fact that we need to list, start listing Blueberry Hill Road.
Yes.
All the way from, what is it, 240? 240 to?
240 to 64.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I do agree, I think that we do need to take some more steps in the planning grant aspect. I would also agree with Commissioner O'Donnell, Pillar Bridge and any other bridges within the National Monument will be a major economic drive. So I think that's something we can say. Rather easily, just I think that we just need to make sure we have it on the plan as close as we can to shovel-ready projects. So, you know, let's just roll away it and hammer this out, and then we'll get back to your messages.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, the next item is the public hearing that cannot start till 10:00 AM. I would ask that this time we tackle the consent agenda. And then it will take us about a time to get to the public hearing, is that acceptable? I get a motion for removing the consent agenda, item 11 before item 10.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt?
Yes.
Flash check out.
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I will read each item if the commissioner has any discussion or a comment on one. We will pull that from the agenda, it will be the next item of the agenda unless the 10 o'clock hour is reached. We must start the public hearing at that time.
Mr. Chairman, when you read item D, you said strike, including Cerro de la Hola. Because it is not included in the resolution. It's not included. That was misplaced. If you read the resolution, there's no message, nothing that indicates potmam. So that's just misleading the agenda item.
Cerro de la Hola is potmam.
I know, but it's not in the resolution that we're considering.
Okay, well, once I read the consent agenda, do you want to pull that and?
No, I don't want to pull it. I've read, I've read the resolution, and there's no mention of potmam. It just mentions Ute and San Antonio. So I just wanted to clarify that, I don't need to pull it.
Okay, item A of the consent agenda is approval of out-of-state travel and actual reimbursement to Gilberto. Okay, that's fine. Gilberto Jamio to attend Honeywell HUG training in Phoenix, Arizona from June 10th through 15th, 2018. Item B is approval of out-of-state travel for Gabriel Romero to attend the National Association of Counties Conference and Exposition in Nashville, Tennessee from July 13th through 16th, 2018. Item C is approval of out-of-state travel for Tammy Jamio and Cristian Arroyo to attend the National Association of Counties Conference in Expo in Nashville, Tennessee from July 13th through 16th, 2018. Item D is approval of Resolution 2018-21, Resolution of Taus County Commission Decline Support of the Cerros del Norte Conservation Act to establish Cerros del Norte Wilderness within the Rio Grande del Norte National Mountain, including Cerro de la Hola, also known as potmam. Item E is approval of Taus County Work Rules and Regulations. Item F, approval of Resolution. Item F, approval of Resolution Number 2018-28, which is Resolution Amending and Replacing Tauskas County Personnel Policy, dated November 7th, 2017, with effective date of December 17th, 2017. Item J is approval of Resolution Number 2018-3, Resolution Declaring Hazardous Fire Conditions and imposing fire restrictions on open fires, smoking, and other ignition sources. Item H is approval of Resolution Number 2018-31, Resolution of the Tauskas County Commission Authorizing the Submission of the New Mexico Community Development Block Grant Program, Application to the Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division, Authorizing Tauskas County Commission Shared Act as Tauskas County's Chief Executive Officer and Authorized Representative in All Matters pertaining to Tauskas County's Participation in the Community Development Block Grant Program. Item I is approval of Resolution 2018-32, Resolution Opposing Personal Property Delinquent Tax Penalty for Delinquent Accounts. Item J is approval of Resolution 2018-33, Resolution Opposing an Ad Valorem Tax for the Benefit of El Prado Water and Sanitation Districts. Item K is approval of Resolution Number 2018-34, Resolution Opposing an Ad Valorem Tax for the Benefit of Valle de los Rachos Water and Sanitation Districts. Item L is DFA Resolution Number 25, 2017, 18, Fiscal Year Final Budget Resolution, Requesting to Increase or Decrease Revenue and Expenditures Due to Recent Budget Cuts Made to the Senior Program for State and Federal Awards. Item M is approval of a Budget Adjustment for Tauska EMS Fire Size Tax Fund 0222-1500. Item N is approval of Budget Adjustment for New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant Fund Item O is approval of Budget Adjustment for County Fire Chief 0209-1705. Item P is approval of Budget Adjustment for Igana Camada Community Center Grant Fund 2449-2559. Item Q is approval of Budget Adjustment for 2017 EMPG Grant Fund 2446-2563. Item R is approval of Budget Adjustment for Daniels Fund 1219-0120. Item S is approval of Budget Adjustment for County Sheriff's Fund 0101-0500. Item T is approval of Budget Adjustment for Foster Grandparent Senior Companion Fund 2219. Item U is approval of Budget Adjustment for Senior Citizen Fund 0219-0113. Item V is approval of Budget Adjustment for Chamosal Senior Center Fund 2452-2605. And finally, W is approval of Budget Adjustment for Public Works Department 0204-1600. Commissioners, I ask that we pull item G and place it after the public hearing because it's dependent on the public hearing for that to be able to go into effect.
I'm going to ask for D and U and V.
D?
U and V.
V? V is indicted?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Item A, I would second to pull items D, U, and V for immediate action, and item G to follow the public hearing. Third call, roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Thembry.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell, item D, Resolution 2018-21.
If our county manager can tell us what was discussed after a previous meeting relating to this, we were going to get some more information.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we did get all of the information requested, which was the maps, we were able to find the old resolutions that had been referenced. All that should be attached. We could take out any reference to San Antonio and Utah and the Cerrro de la Hoya reservation in there. So we feel like we captured everything that had been requested in the previous meetings, and we did get, we feel we got all the information as requested from Mrs. Salazar from the previous meetings.
I would motion to approve item D under the consent agenda.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing non, third call, roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
No.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Thembry.
Yes. Okay, item U, Commissioner O'Donnell, is approval of budget adjustment for senior fund, senior citizen fund?
I, if you have our finance director explain that.
This is just a budget adjustment to allocate the budget without bringing expenses for the fiscal year end? So this one is not an argument of just making budget from within the fund to cover the operational expenses?
I'm sorry, I didn't see it in the packet. I may have misplaced where it is and what page.
I think Commissioner is... I'm showing in three point three.
Did you find it? So what we're doing is we're taking money out from office supplies from $1,700. We're taking subscriptions and dues, $330, $1,080 from telephone expense, $368 a year workers comp, and $1,500, $1,150 from health insurance. And we're putting money into the utilities so we can cover the utility expenses through fiscal year ends. And we're putting money into noncapital to allow for the fridge server and refrigerator for the Chamosal Senior Center. And we're also taking much stuff from other contractual services, and all this is coming out of the home maker transportation expense budget. The total, the total budget out is $6,64, going in, and I do recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve budget adjustment for senior citizen fund 0219-0113. Third call, roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Thembry.
Yes. And the next one, Commissioner, item V is the budget adjustment for Chamosal Senior Center.
So this budget adjustment is allowable by the grants, who did receive notification and notice of obligation from our granting agency, allowing Tauskas County to purchase two refrigerators from the Chamosal Senior Center. So this moves money from buildings and structures into noncapital to allow for the purchasing of refrigerators, and then give those refrigerators we're delivering this week.
Thank you. I take a motion to approve item V, approval of the budget adjustment for Chamosal Senior Center.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second to approve item V of the consent agenda for the budget adjustment for Chamosal Senior Center. Third call, roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Thembry.
Yes. Almost perfect timing to get this to the public hearing. So item 10A is a public hearing for discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of ordinance number 2018-3. This is an ordinance replacing and repealing and replacing ordinance number 2006-6, establishing the Tauskas County Open Burn Ordinance, which will be presented by Mr. Mike Corvah. And staff. So what we will do here is Mr. Corvah will make the initial presentation, and at that time, I will go to the citizens and the public in attendance, ask for their comments, then open the public hearing, then we'll close the public hearing, and then commissioners will have time to ask Mr. Corvah further questions. Also, if you do plan to testify today, you will be joined by the clerk during the public hearing portion. Mr. Corvah.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So this ordinance that we're trying to override or repeal if you will, is the original one, which was Tauskas County Burn and Open Burn Act ordinance, and it fell under the Office of OAM, who's had it since 2006. Right now, what we're trying to do is get it back under myself and the fire districts so they can issue out their own burn permits. That way, people don't have to come into Taus, you know, they perform on more hollow way than they have to right now come into town to get burn permits. And it just makes more sense for them to go to their respective fire districts and fire chiefs to get a burn permit. And of course, obviously, if they can't get ahold of the fire chiefs, or if they can still come into town, myself, my staff will issue out OAM's, also worry that they would still help, they'll still be able to sign. If they can't, if I'm not around or my staff's not around. But it just makes more sense. It took myself and the fire chiefs, it'd been a while to work through all those curbs, but they're in agreement with it, and we will support from all of them. That's kind of what we're standing on. It's been a long work process above a year, but I'm glad we've found out this agenda. Hopefully, we can get it approved.
Anything, Mr. Musso, to add to that?
I just feel that the process is going to be a lot smoother once the fire districts are able to do so. We've had a lot of debates in the past from the community members that do have to cover the burn permits, so this will ease them up a little bit. We will continue to help them, and we'll continue to move forward with doing the whole process as well, once again, to be in service with.
I think you remember Bob, we were only for that when they passed it that way, and there's a lot of dictators. Okay, at this time, I would open up the public hearing for any comments from anyone in the audience regarding ordinance 2018-3. Any comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Hearing non, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mike, I think this is a really good, good thing, and, you know, we can have different conditions in different parts of the county. It can be rural, the Inpiasco and Rankey doesn't want a burning down there, whereas there's nothing up north, and Carlo wants to use that day as a strategic burning day. So, you know, this gives the authority there, and it makes for people have better access and deal with their local fire district.
Yeah, I agree, because right now with Willard Beach, still has snow up there, moisture, but it's not where, it'd be the county as a whole, so it's, gives it more leeway to kind of distinguish if they're rightfully burned bad or not, and vice versa, like old I have this and that. So it just helps all of us out a lot.
Very good on that. Thank you, Ben. Anything else?
Move to approve?
I'll second Mr. Chairman. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2018-3, which is an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 2006-6, establishing in Tauskas County Open Burn Ordinance. Third call, roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Thembry.
Yes. Next item on the agenda then is, from the consent agenda, is approval of Resolution Number 2018-30, Resolution Declaring Hazardous Fire Conditions and imposing fire restrictions on open fire, smoking, and other ignition sources. This will be presented by our fire chief, Mike Corvah, and our OAM director, Bobby Musso.
So back to the discussion. Right now, we're dealing with, we've had a little moisture in the past, probably month and a half, two months, and myself, just looking at the current weather and the future outlook, and we're not seeing any hint in sight for any water anytime soon. We've already had a couple decently big fires that have been able to stop on our end before it got into Forest Service, and I think everybody's on edge. This year, I mean, every county surrounding us is already in a burn ban, so our constituents have been lucky that we're very different in this burn ban right now, because Gulf Ax County's been in a burn ban since January. But I think right now it's not for us to follow suit with Forest Service to state one. The only difference with our burn ban compared to theirs is we cannot allow any of the town fires anymore. They're, you know, Forest Service doesn't allow that, but we're dry, and we don't see any moisture coming in May and July. We'll have a decent month soon. But also, if we do get moisture, we can reset this, we can pull it. If we do get this, if we come out of the moisture here, I'm assuming we can do that as well.
And this does not have anything to do with UL approved propane outside cooking devices?
Correct.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Sir? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-30, Resolution Declaring Hazardous Fire Conditions and imposing restrictions on open fire, smoking, and other ignition sources. And this will go into effect?
Day.
Today. Third call, roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Thembry.
Yes. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 12, Department Matters. Item A is discussion regarding senior center budget cuts, presented by our manager, Mr. Thembry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you saw on our consent agenda, we did a couple of bars to address this issue, but I wanted to give a little more detail than I may bring out Martinez or Mr. Alton Haldeman when it comes to the details of the budget. But we did receive notice from the New Mexico area for AG that we will be receiving a little over $54,000 in budget cuts to the senior program. The timing could be worse. Obviously, never want to experience cuts, but this close to the end of the fiscal year makes it virtually impossible for us to absorb it in any way, shape, or form in order to spread it out over a period of time and minimize the impact on our budget. So I really wanted to make sure that the board was aware. We probably will need to come and ask for some fund balance to get us through this year, this fiscal year. We're too close to the end to not carry through what we have to do. We have obligations. There are a couple of programs that we are going to have to cut, and I am informing the board that we're doing three layoffs essentially to give our homemakers. We have three homemakers that no longer can afford to keep on staff because of these budget cuts. We may not be able to bring them back right away to the new fiscal year either, looking at the new fiscal year cuts that are going to carry forward. So specific to homemakers and respite program, that's where it's going to be the biggest hit for us. We're looking at, and as you saw, I appreciate the hard work of our fire department, we're looking for ways to kind of absorb what we can, and that's why there were so many budget adjustments into these consent agenda, to try and figure out how to take from one area to continue to at least provide the food and the services that are essential to the siege. So I don't have what else to say. It's hard to keep coming to you guys with budget cuts, and it's unfortunate, and you'll get a taste of our budget this afternoon, we go through the work study, but it makes it that much more difficult when we continue to get cuts in all of our budget funded programs like the senior program or DWI program. I stopped reading questions at this time in the meeting or for our fire department.
So it's totally unacceptable, and I would hope that we would find ways to offset this $54,000 loss. I hear you saying we can't, but I'd like to find a way, and the same with the DWI, pack to keep cutting these programs. So I think it's unacceptable. I think we need to do something to maintain a level of proper services for seniors.
You know what, Commissioner Thembry, we're having this meeting right now because of all the, the notary candidates, they were invited, are here in town, and begging to hear that discussion and exactly what you just said.
So who made the cuts?
I believe they came down from the area for AG, the metro of the New Mexico area for AG, and so that's a pack that's an arm of the New Mexico Economic Development District. They receive their funding from the AG in the long term, and they get it from the Fed. So, I mean, basically, I was pointing out the change, that it happened from the federal level and it trickled down. But I think what was most frustrating for us with the timing, you tell us in May that we're going to have to absorb a $54,000 cut, and it's only a month and a half, and after the fiscal year, it becomes very difficult. We felt like they may have known that these cuts were coming as early as March, and if we would have known as early as March, it could have made a few changes to absorb a little bit more. I agree with you, Commissioner, especially in this budget here, we cannot not continue the programs. We can't just shut everything down. The homemaker and respite programs are basically contractual positions, and we've made that clear to these positions in the past. They knew that it is contingent on funding, and so the letters will be going out. We have a meeting at 11 o'clock, they'll communicate between each other to walk through the process, but it's not the first time that we've had to go down that road with these positions, and so...
Do we have another fund that we can move money into to save this program instead of doing layoffs? And I think we need to write a letter to our congressional delegation. of doing layoffs, and I think we need to write a letter to our congressional delegation, and I could, you know, I'm not sure about this North Central Economic Development District and what's happening with them, so I think we, I just don't think we can stand by and let this happen. So if you can find a way to put some money in so we can save those programs.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Donald, I, that's basically what I'm telling you, is you're going to see a request by the next meeting to use some money from our general fund reserves to complete the year, and so we will do our best to do that. The move to cut the homemakers, that is our needed process, we have to at least for the month or two, let it go so that we can look at the future of that program. That is one of the programs where we don't need all of the required, I guess, their units, and so we do well on all the other programs, we're definitely feeding a lot of seniors, we're providing a lot of meals at the homes, we're focusing on those programs at this time because we feel there's a great impact to the seniors out there, so we'll continue to drive, new budget will likely have to buy some room for this program, we're also going to ask the town, we're going to put a formal request into the town and see if they'll help us in any way, shape, or form.
So, let me ask you, we put four million, whether we put it in some kind of CD or something of our excess cash balance, we have the money, but is that allowable? Can we use the excess cash balance to offset this loss? And related to that four million that we put in reserve in a CD, or will we put it in investment? Can we take that money out now? How many years do we have to wait till we take that money out?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Donald, I think it's going to be necessary for us to liquidate any CDs at this time, we have reserves that are out enough to be able to meet the funding requirement for this fiscal year, and I do feel comfortable asking the reserves for it at one time, it's not, hopefully not reoccurring anything, we do have those reserves for a reason, and this is one of those reasons, we are waiting for the rainy days we know are going to come, especially from underfunding sources, so I feel comfortable being able to tap the reserves for this fiscal year. We will need to look at how to keep the reoccurring into future fiscal years, so we don't, I don't think there's any need to liquidate investments at this time.
Okay, well, I'd sure like to get to the bottom of this, I mean, I think our congressional delegation has failed us, and while they're busy trying to pass wilderness resolutions, somehow this got overlooked, I don't know how it happened, but I think we need to write a letter to them as well. I mean, it's nice we got the Title III coming back, but I think we just need to continue to let them know that we're not happy with their performance.
Is, there are ways, I think you're proposing a special meeting next week, you have the numbers together, so this can minimize the layoff by this special meeting? No?
Yeah, like I said, I think the layoffs unfortunately have to happen for those three positions in order for us to see if there's a future for that program in fiscal year. We will potentially have something for you, on my end, to move the money that's needed to get through the other programs for the year, but I know that finance staff's been working really hard to figure this out, these are some of the complicated budgets we get, it's allocated per program, and so it's very hard to move from one program to another, so we're trying to do our best.
Commissioner, what does the homemakers do?
Let's try, I think, help me better, I believe they basically provide home healthcare, they go into our seniors' homes.
I'll let you elaborate.
Commissioners, the homemakers are primarily responsible for going into the homes of these seniors and helping with the laundry, doing dishes, cooking a meal, providing those types of services to the families that need them.
And how many do we employ, just the three in the county?
Currently, we have three.
And so we're going to lay them off temporarily, and this is because of a $59,000 cut, is that what you said?
It's related to a $57,000 cut.
And, Mr. Chairman, so how many people will be affected?
At this time, those three homemaker positions is all who are affecting.
But in terms of people who receive this sort of...
I don't know if they serve more than one client at a time, these three individuals at least see three clients, so compared to three clients, we'd also feel a little...
Do we know how many there are?
That would probably be a question for Mike, I know they can basically serve two families at a time, the homemakers, they go half the week with one family and half the week with another family. Our respite unfortunately were also affected by this, they work on a voucher system, and that's about seven or eight potential workers that are affected by this.
Commissioner Mike, if I'm still asked that.
Yeah, just one follow up, should North Central have told us in March, is that what you're suggesting? I'm just, I mean, it's not, you know...
They came back, or they came in March and did an assessment on our program back then, we received a great review, seeing our program was doing well in all these areas, we are thinking by, at that time, somebody probably knew that these cuts were important.
They've got their budget meeting this Friday, I don't know if Commissioner Romero's going to show up, I also don't know.
Vice Chair Gagos.
I guess, Chairman, Mr. Corvaba, is there, I guess, are we looking at rehiring back in July, or just hoping that the department...
That will depend on the reoccurring revenues, at this time, I believe that cuts going forward.
Commissioners, right now, the preliminary budget that we've submitted for FY19 only has one homemaker position, except all that we could budget for for FY19, so anticipating this cut might carry forward into FY19.
Commissioner Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, why can't we enter into contracts individually with these people, take it out of our commission budget, I mean, how much are we talking about for these three homemakers? Is it the full 57? I mean, why can't we just find a place and enter into a professional services contract, which you're authorized to do under certain lower amounts, to continue, because what I hear is, there's going to be six seniors that are going to be affected, and then if moving into the next fiscal year, four seniors, I mean, I'm trying to get a handle on, how else can we fund this? Why can't we take some of our budget out of the commission's budget or somewhere and do enter into these just professional services contracts?
Commissioners, right now, due to this cut, the homemaker program received a cut of almost $22,000 just to that program alone, which resulted in the layup of these three workers. I know in the past, we have looked at doing some kind of contractual services with these individuals, I mean, there were a lot of questions HR related, because we had started them off as county employees.
Can we use them as casuals?
Right now, with our FY19 budget that we've submitted, there's just no cash to keep all three positions, right now, we are just anticipating approval for possibly one homemaker position.
And where does that one homemaker serve, what part of the county?
That would be a decision up to Mike, the director, on who would essentially fill that position.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Donald, I think if I understand, we can look at this, we can see how we would try and figure this out, right now, we would get funded, excess funded, that would work for a long time, we would have to find reoccurring revenue to make this a permanent thing, so we can look at what it would take to get through this year and maybe hit the excess fund balance for a certain period into the new year, but it isn't something that we can sustain long term without finding that reoccurring revenue. So if we pull it from one place, it'll always be taken from that place, so if we pull it out of manager, commissioner's budget, then that has to stay into the senior budget going forward, and we would have to find new money to replenish that if needed to. So we'll definitely take a look at it, we'll see what options we have, and maybe by next week or the first meeting in June, we'll have some options. I understand your concern, we also have a concern, we will do our best to address AG, area for AG, and the Economic Development District. Commissioner Romero, I would be appreciative you would mention our concern with the big tightening, it really was unfortunate that it was so last minute, and in the future, if they know about this coming down, Mike, which I would imagine they had a pretty good idea that things were getting tighter, especially by March, maybe even earlier than that, so our ask is simply, give us more time, let us know as soon as they know, so that we can, we're the boots on the ground and are having to deal with the impact of the budget cuts, so they should give us a little more courtesy in regards to that.
So, is it? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sure of that.
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you, so my question is, where's Mike to deal today, and how does he feel about these budget cuts?
He's very frustrated, he's quite upset, I believe he had an appointment today, so I believe he's out of the office, but he was quite upset, he's, obviously, the one that has to deal with the layoffs and contacting his staff, and then in the middle of the winter, couldn't even let him go, so he's quite frustrated, he's worked really hard on the program, has had his staff and our finance department, and as Mr. Iall mentioned, we had voiding dues a few months ago for the hard work that they put into it, and then they cut the budget, and so he's very frustrated because how you continue to provide the level of service that they're providing us for with less money, and his big request is to ask the town, ask our partners for some money, we really need to see if there's others that can help us.
Is that written?
I don't know that, I don't think it's been completed, so...
I may have not heard, Mr. Chairman, trying to think of ways how we can save, I might not be listening to everything that you said, is it going to take, is it going to cost $57,000 to get these three positions to finish out the fiscal year?
So, the homemakers, specific to the homemakers, is about a $22,000 cut, and as I mentioned, all these budgets are so specific that it's not really possible to take from an excess budget to cover the homemakers, because it's spelled out specific for the homemakers, so we're able to find some savings in other funds, so the 57 may absorb a little bit of it here and there, but for the most part, we're taking a hit in the homemakers of $22,000, we can't absorb that.
It's 57 plus 22.
No, the 22 out of the 57 are specific to the homemakers, so that tells you that 57 minus 22 is the balance amongst all the other funds, or it's spread out amongst the other funds, the homemakers and respite took the biggest hit, the biggest percentage hit.
Commissioner, can I ask clarification, so this is federal money that comes down to the state, and then they disperse, so who, if anybody has the information, Amanda Olliver, is this the federal side letting us down, or is this the state side letting us down?
I don't know if we have an answer to that.
Okay, if we don't have it today, can you give me that answer?
Yeah, so on this letter that Mr. Corvaba referenced here, there's a page two to that letter, for the federal, where there was a $91,000 cut, and so the states put in some money to offset that cut, so there was a net cut of $57,000.
So, if we would not have received the state funding, as Martinez just mentioned, it would have been a greater cut, and they are gaining the feds for the bigger cut, and they said that they were able to offset some of that with state funding. I think, and I agree with you, Chairman, that's a question we need to look into further and ask this question and see if they can provide that to us, because I think that's part of their...
Before we fire off, but we are going to fire off, but we need to make sure that we're firing in the right direction.
Understood.
Agreed? All right.
There's no further questions, it's just one of those really sad news and unfortunate things I have to, the commission know about.
Sad news and stuff, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll move on to item B, discussion and decision regarding test bank juvenile detention center, Mr. Corvaba and Mr. Arvita in the background.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the same item as we kind of talked about last meeting, the request of the board after the last meeting was for me to go and have a discussion with the staff of the juvenile detention center, I appreciate that Mr. Arvita and Lieutenant McQuaid have made that happen last Thursday, and so last Thursday, 1:00, myself and this remaining veteran from HR, women, sat down and had a discussion with the staff of the GDC, the staff that showed up, and you know, came in after time off as well, just to hear what we had to talk about, and I want to make sure that I clarified, I think one of the biggest misconceptions or things I didn't really get out there at the last meeting was, although I am suggesting that we shut down the juvenile detention center, I was not suggesting to do it overnight, I do want to ask you us on how to do this thoughtfully, and our, my idea was to stop accepting children until 30th, the end of our fiscal year, so that would have given us a little time to do this, and so as we talked to the staff at juvenile detention center, and that helped, we needed a little more, some of their concerns to know that it wasn't from Monday to the next, it's not something that next week they're going to have to go out and run the job, so having a little time to unwind it is still my request. I think after talking to them, some of the biggest concerns was, if they move over to the adult side, that we don't just kind of throw into the rules, the board and Arvita made sure that I know that that's not the case, and that, I think, if we were to stop accepting juveniles at a certain point, say June 30, I would request by another two weeks of keeping in line in order to be able to allow them to be trained, properly trained, you know, for the hour and a half services, we typically do so that they have better training before they get on the floor, and we can start cycling them into shifts, a little bit slower, you know, so that they have the ability to get their feet wet and understand the difference between juvenile and adult side. So that was, I think, one of the big things that was a question there, they had questions about the reduction in force policy, they had questions about the ability to transfer to other jobs, and I told them, if there is a job opening at the county, we'll certainly give them the ability to interview for that job, if it's a job at a higher pay rate, that would come with a new job, if it's a job at a lower pay rate, unfortunately, that would be part of it as well, so if they accepted a job at a different, in a different department at a lower rate, they would pay the, if they were able to find a job at a higher rate in a different department, they'd have the opportunity to do that. The big question in regards to some officers that are considering going over to the adult side is seniority, and so we read the deduction of force policy to them, you know, copies, seniority is the key, that basically determines that transition, so we still have a few kinks to work out on that, and primarily corporals at the juvenile detention center, or essentially, we would classify sergeants over at the adult side, they do a lot of industry, so let's work on juvenile sites, so we got to figure out how we would transition corporals and whether they were viewed in that hierarchy, but I think we have time to do that. So all in all, the meeting, I think, went pretty well, I can't say they were happy, I'm not going to pretend that it was a great, you know, news that they were receiving, I'm telling them, unfortunately, I couldn't continue to suggest and recommend, I mean, to shut that juvenile detention center down, but I believe talking to them and answering their questions, as well as we could help at least give them the ability to know that we're doing this thoughtfully, and starts something we can do over there. I don't know, is there anything to add, or...
So, again, good morning, Commissioner, again, I just would like to reiterate a little bit of what the county manager here has mentioned, we did have a meeting with the juvenile detention staff, and of course, there was a lot of questions in regards to seniority, and exactly how many positions would be available for the adult side. As it stands, we have the staff analysis, and per the New Mexico Association of Counties, we are shy of quite a few positions, we've made it work with open hat, and again, you know, whether or not the commission chooses to keep the juvenile detention, we'll make it work one way or another. The staff, at the end of the meeting, they were comfortable, you know, I know that there has been a lot of concerns from constituents in regards to possible housing of juvenile residents, meaning the kids, we have reached out to our neighboring counties, which is Santa Fe County, and we've reached out and we've received a contract, and we've signed a contract with them, again, you know, the contract, it is substantially more than what we are currently charging over here in Taos County, but again, we need to have the needs and the means for our kids. I am familiar with the facility, and it is a good facility in Santa Fe, they do provide adequate services for the children. Currently, with the juvenile detention here in Taos County, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, we have one, one Taos County? So, we don't have any Taos County right now, we have one that's waiting to go to YDTC. Uh, we have one that's, uh, waiting to go to YDTC. And the other, the other kid is from...
San Miguel.
San Miguel. So again, you know, these are contract counties that they do pay our facility. I'm open for any questions.
Well, on the services you talked about in San Fe, thank you for helping us out. Because right now, kids in the facility, they get education? Provide them education or arts? I know the Meza Theater works with them. There's a school teacher that's there with them. That goes away. Talk to me about what the ultimate...
So right now, um, I actually have, I'm CJ Grace from Taos County Schools here. We have an union with the school district where they provide the education services. Um, when they, they have, no, they, they, the entire community. Uh, they provide us with microchips and computers and, uh, educational materials that the kids use. Uh, a library. When the director of KED came in, uh, he labeled us as the flagship of the state as far as our education programs concerned. Again, you, like you said, we do have, uh, other services provided to the kids. We have, uh, various art teachers that come in. We have various yoga instructors that comes in. So we really try to program the kids so that it's not a waste of time while they're, they're learning, uh, they're educated on through evidence-based practices. They're learning basically the skills that they're going to need to function on their own outside because a lot of the kids that we get are from broken homes or from, uh, traumatic situations which cause them to be in detention.
I commend you for offering that and being the flagship. And that's something that's very valuable that we are able to lose there.
I, I agree with you. If we close this, we're going to lose something that's very valuable within our community. Uh, a lot of the other detention centers in the state have a kind of fall of soup in a short period, in a small way. But we're still offering most, a lot of the facilities, uh, I think we're the only one that can really say that they're offering as much as we are as Burnley County. If that gives you the idea of their budget versus our budget. What we've been able to do is we've been able to pull in people from the community, uh, to stand behind us and then offer these services free of charge. Our yoga instructors free of charge, our med theaters free of charge. Uh, our education is no cost to the county. So the community really has to be behind the juvenile detention center. Uh, for that, for whatever it's worth. However, we do still have a million dollar budget that we're struggling to keep.
One more thing to note, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I had a meeting scheduled with the secretary, who I had D S to the afternoon. I received word that Friday afternoon that I need to be postponed for tomorrow. So I had to rearrange my schedule for tomorrow to make sure I could meet with the secretary that that happened. Don't want to do prior to the end. I know that was one of the hopeful considerations for you before you made a decision that that wasn't able to happen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of questions for, um, Mr. Arbetas and county manager. So we will transition four over, is it? Correct me if I'm wrong, and then we will have possible four layoffs?
We're looking at transition eight over and potentially three. Then also be three vacancies at the end of all of that with the transitions that we may have to put in.
Okay, and then Mr. Arbetas, you alluded to the, very, what was the word you used? Needed quite a few positions to qualify for what NMAC recommends to get our certification. Once those eight are moved over, then how many are we lacking?
We're lacking possibly three more positions. But I think that, you know, just by showing that we make a good faith effort, uh, again, uh, we have been able to keep our population steady. Uh, there was a time when our population was actually hitting 80. Currently, I believe, as of today, we were at 58 this morning, which is good. Uh, but again, uh, you know, the crime rate is growing in the community. And, uh, we do need a place for these individuals. Uh, we do have an 88-bed facility and we, we can accommodate the need. But, uh, you know, one of our biggest concerns is, is when it comes to, you know, uh, population, whether it be a female population or we're only limited, uh, X amount of cells, we can't be overcrowding the population. Uh, we have actually, uh, felt that in the past year. Uh, where we were actually having to or considering moving some of our female population out and housing again at a different facility. The other concern that we have within Taos County is, uh, Taos County really does not have a special management unit. And that is something that is needed throughout any county detention facility to include state. We need a special management unit for the simple fact being that, uh, it is a known fact and statistics have proven that, uh, detention now is housing a lot more mentally ill, uh, individuals. It's very unfortunate. But, you know, again, we look at the county, we look at the community and we see exactly what resources are out there. And sometimes there's none. So therefore, we provide what we have to, uh, within our county.
Um, Mr. Chairman. I was curious as to what your plans would be for that side. Are you thinking of putting the women over there? Are you thinking of special management? I would think if you put the women over, you have that one pod for SMU. But I, I'm just curious. I'd like to hear what, what your thoughts are.
Well, and, and again, you know, this is based on what the county manager would choose to do with the place. Um, again, my thoughts, and I'll say this, you know, Lieutenant Montoya, his passion is with children, is with the kids. Unfortunately, we don't, we really don't have a population where we have and we are housing kids. I would definitely consider housing the female population and having separation in sight. Uh, other ideas have come across where it'd be a special management unit. Uh, where you manage disruptive detainees, uh, detainees that are possibly caught introducing contraband, possibly involved in altercations or just problematic individuals. Uh, another idea that has come across, and you know, this is just something that has been, uh, thought, possibly even having an outside work detail. You know, to where we have that separation. We have these individuals that cannot go into a population setting. And you could actually keep the grounds within the county complex. You can keep them, again, you know, the, the individuals that would be identified, would be very minimal, uh, restrictive, uh, individuals, but would be monitored at all times. So those are plans, those are things that have come across. Uh, of course, knowing that we do need more room for the female population and special management, of course, those would be priority.
So I, one more question. I'm sorry to take so long, but you know, that's what I do, ask questions. Um, regarding the transportation cost and the increase the sheriff's department will see, is there a way that these nonprofits could apply for healthcare assistance? Include, uh, that in there as far as transporting these kids? Or, or is that not realistic because of the security issues?
Commissioner, I think we want to make sure that the security issues are the number one priority on that. And I think providing more resources if needed for the SO to do their thing. Um, with the extra staff on the adult side, they do have a transport vehicle. They would do the SO potentially now with those extra staff members, do some of those transports. Um, I also want to mention with those extra staff members, we now have the ability for better training. So even if, um, we spend a couple of weeks training these individuals before we put them on the floor, once they're on the floor, that opens up the opportunity for their peers to get better training, off-site training every occasionally. Or, you know, it's right now so challenging for them in the staffing matter to even do the proper training because we're short on that. So even if we needed a few more by the numbers, by the book, having two more per shift really gives a lot of, gives a lot of flexibility to especially...
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, I, before you talked about the transition of closure, right? I understood your earlier comments. Um, what's that time I talked about?
I would still like to recommend that...
How long was six months?
I would still like to recommend that we stop accepting juveniles on June 30th. Um, at least our neighbors. Because most of our revenue contracts with our neighbors expire June 30th. I don't feel like it's responsible to extend those or do new contracts. Um, it would be nice to give at least two weeks after there's no more kids in the facility to work on training and work on a transition. So I think if we could do a couple of weeks after the closure, after we're done accepting kids, I think that would be more than enough time to allow them to properly train and transition over to the adult side.
So have we ever tried to negotiate a higher rate with our neighboring communities that want us to house the kids?
Um, we have conversations. I think I do have had more than, than mine in conversations. But essentially, if we get too close to the rate of Santa Fe, then we're competing with Santa Fe. Right now, we get, I think, besides quality and programming, we're so low. Our $130 a day is basically half of what Santa Fe. So great programming, great results for the kids at a very low price is kind of why we continue to keep our neighbors, um, coming here. Um, so I don't know. We could go up in price, but we're under the risk of then rushing out those customers as well. So we get up to the same price as Santa Fe and San Miguel County finds it maybe 30, 40 minutes closer. And it's easier to transport to Santa Fe at that point than to come through the pass and maybe using those kids. And that's why my worry is if we go too high on the revenue, we push away our customers.
Well, I mean, we're, we're, if we go high enough to, you're, obviously, some of the expenditure, you know, I mean, why stay low rate and have one or two? And that doesn't do us any good. Then might as well have the rates close to Santa Fe and squeeze. If you're going to squeeze your neighbors away, then we squeeze them away because we're, we're doing it for budget reasons, not because we just feel like we have to close. That, that, that's something I'd ask, which you consider. Uh, the other thing was, is I'd like to, you talked about accreditation. Mr. Nelson, would you be able to tell us, like, becoming accredited gives those benefits to the county? What regard do we see as savings in insurance? Do we see, what, what are we looking at that is just...
First and foremost, I mean, you're, you're going to get accredited, you're going to get noticed. I mean, we're going to get noticed for a job well done. You know, Taos County has a wonderful facility. We, we made it work and, uh, you know, I can honestly brag about that. Uh, one thing that it will do, it, what it helps is the county as a whole with insurance pools. I mean, uh, currently, you know, after speaking with, uh, certain people through the Association of Counties, uh, Taos County is very insurable now as opposed to what it used to be, um, back in the day.
We're 1% of the 100% paid out now. Does that make sense? To separate it to dollars isn't factual because Harding County is so small, Burnley County is so thick. So if you look at it at a percentage of what's paid out on law enforcement and detention, we are now 1%. We used to be 17%.
So I, I think that speaks for itself, uh, the staff. Uh, we have wonderful staff over here. We have a wonderful team. Um, you know, I'm continuously speaking with county manager in regards to our team. I think that it would just go a long ways, uh, for the community just to know that, uh, we are an accredited facility. Not only that, but you know, we have Lieutenant Montoya who has attended many PRIA, uh, PRIA trainings. And he is now our PRIA coordinator. And, you know, again, PRIA being the Prison Rate Elimination Act. And, you know, that is something that speaks very highly. We now have MOVs with outside entities that are working with us. Um, again, this is something that I think we've reached out in the past two years that I have been here and, uh, it's working. All I can say is it's working. And as the time moves on, it's going to continue working. And, uh, I, I just, I foresee a big future in this place and with the staff.
So I could add a question. Ms. Martinez, could you come over, please? Typical annual budget there is actually about 860?
So a little less than that, 67, 68.
Okay. So of that, off the top of your head, what percentage is personnel cost? Almost all of it. So that continues on, that dollar amount continues on when we move over there. And what percentage of that would be utilities for that service?
We actually need utilities in the general fund budget.
So, but those will stay regardless if it's a SMU, it's a female. So first off, it's not a million dollar budget. It's a under $800,000 budget.
Right.
And that remains because if we try to keep all the employees, which I hope we do, then it's, it's making our detention facility, our adult, a better place. And that accreditation is going to save you 5% off the top, change our multiplier. It's a big savings that, that, or Arbetas is able to do that. And the credibility that comes with our facility is unbelievable in the eyes of the multiplying people. So, so all of that money is just going to be moved into another, including the healthcare costs for that facility. All that stuff, that's the only thing that probably goes away. Correct me? Okay, thank you. And the last thing I want to do is, is I want to commend Lieutenant Montoya with his programs that he's offered in there that made a difference to a lot of kids. Maybe it's not a lot of Taos County kids, but it's a lot of kids. And your passion for what you've done in there allows people to...
The only thing I have to say, I'll thank you for that. The only thing I have to add to that would be if, if this does happen, I feel the county should look at alternative programming for, speaking of not holding kids in detention, doesn't mean they're not probation, they're not, uh, alternative, alternatives to detention. Uh, I believe that if we're going to close this, that the county definitely needs to look at alternative programming for these kids.
There are some juvenile that do require detention because it's something very serious. But treatment of juvenile is really, you know, incarceration in some instances. So I agree with what you said.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to thank Lieutenant Montoya for your hard work attempting to get the RTC dedication heart that you show. And I would hope that you would become a member of the Taos Health Council and move these initiatives of the various nonprofits who have, you've worked with and the individuals forward and that we continue to look at ways to help our youth, uh, you know, before they get into trouble. So I know it breaks your heart that we have to make this decision. And I, I just want to let you know, I, I do appreciate all your hard work.
I do appreciate that. I have attended a few of the Health Council meetings. I keep that in mind, I do have a boss, so I have to ask his permission for that first.
I would hope your boss will send it's okay.
Uh, Vice Chair, I, Mr. Chair, um, for whatever the outcome becomes today, I think it'd help this commission, if we had, uh, the tools to justify whichever way we vote, whether it's getting accreditation letter or copies of accreditation. So we have that to, to disperse to constituents. The commission should just to close the juvenile, uh, we choose to leave it open. Well, then I guess that's another story down the road. But I feel like to have that available for the commission so that we're out there advocating and we don't, we're going to have many, we could possibly have many people, you know, mad because we did close the system.
mad because we did close the system now. And we have to show a reason for that, you know. So I think that's what this commission has always tried to do in the past is have reasons for what decisions we made and why we made them. So if you can get those copies to us, it would be great.
So, and again, once again, Commissioner, thank you. And as we all know, accreditation is a process. It is a process that doesn't happen overnight. As a matter of fact, I've been in facilities where we have been nationally accredited through ACA, we've been accredited through New Mexico Association of Counties, and that was in Santa Fe. And again, you know, the accreditation, as I mentioned, is a process. It takes up to two years. I do believe that we already have a head start based on the fact that we've already identified a staff member that's going to be monitoring compliance and working on files. Those of you that have done walk-throughs through our facility, you will know that Lieutenant Maestas is the person that we have actually designated to include Lieutenant Montoya, who multi-tasked and he assists every which way he can. The accreditation, we have a total of 208 standards. Most recently, it was condensed to, I believe, 194 standards. Out of those 194 standards, we've already pretty much met, I would say, 150 standards. We haven't even applied. So this is just our vision, and I like to say this, the vision of the staff, I consider us a team. And I want them to know that this is a big accomplishment. It really says, it'll say a lot for Taos County. Again, the accreditation process is quarterly documentation that's driven within our facility that we can actually prove and say, this is what we're doing. Every standard requires documents. And since I've been employed with the county, we've been working on documents, documents, and documents. I can believe that it's going to take probably a good, I don't anticipate two years, but I would like to shoot forward as a year. That is my goal. Again, you know, I've been kind of standing by a little bit to see what's going on with the juvenile detention, to include with our new RFPs that are, have been, have come up with our medical or healthcare. Now I think that we have narrowed it down. I do believe that we are going to submit the application to the Association of Counties and we're going to move forward. As for the letter that you are requesting, are you requesting the initial application or once everything has been said and done, the actual accreditation?
Maybe we can get the application so that we have, you know, this is why, this is why we potentially close because we want to get to this accreditation status that gives us all the benefits. That kind of outcome.
And the other thing, once we get it, then you can pay. Correct. The other thing that we would like to do is we would provide the commissioners with the, with the standards. And that's one thing that we will do that way. You will see, the commissioners will see it if they have to show the constituents, this is exactly what goes on in accreditation.
Our law enforcement and detention pool for the last three months has paid out close to $6 million from four claims. Only one of those, which was a very small claim, was not an accredited facility. Mr. Chair.
What were the revenues that were brought in with the juvenile last year?
It's roughly $70,000.
So even if we doubled and didn't lose anybody, it's still, and in closing it, if we didn't close it, we would have to add more money to the adult detention. There's no way around that. If we do close it, then we will have that money within the budget that we can transfer further. If we didn't, then we would have to find additional money because we absolutely have to add some staff and get an SMU and all the various things you guys were looking at.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner, I can run all the needs that we're dealing with that are still going to be there if we keep it open. And you're right on, as I was thinking, Commissioner, I have this question. It goes back to both cost act on. So it roughly costs us $2,200 a day. Imagine if we went up to $220, we'd even have our neighbor's kids in there just to break even. So it's still an uphill battle. Even if we raised our rates, it's a two component equation here and I love the math, but the math doesn't make sense. We would really not, we'd have to go out and recruit statewide to make sure those added evidence to continue that facility.
Okay. Trying to speed it up because I know we've got a lot of people in the audience. It's going to be a very busy session, but we're going to have to do it in here because we have a large number of people. So I don't want to have a public option to do all the business. Pleasure to the commission.
Make a motion to regret the need to close the juvenile detention center.
I'll second that. With, to add to the motion, two week, June 30th and with a reasonable transition period.
Accept that. Commissioner, I'm in to, yes, in case of the actual motion. And second is to regrettably close the juvenile detention center with no further intakes from June 30th and a transition period that the manager will develop.
What discussion, Mr. Chair? Vice Chair Gago. I would hope that the transition would be at least six months. I feel, and I always felt this way, difficult to make decisions when you're in this, I'll use the election here as an example, that you make the decision, you have new commissioners possibly coming in, new staff, and make a decision and then you get dealt those cards. It's a tough card to deal with. I mean, I've done it in my terms as a city councilor and mayor, so I know what it's like. And, you know, I only hope that we will extend this longer. But those are my comments. This question. Vice Chair Gago.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
No.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, for the direction. I do appreciate that. This afternoon, through the budget review study, you'll see the impact of the decision and how most of that money will be moved over to the adult side and very little savings of anything are really going to occur. But it does give us the ability to continually move forward with our budget and finalize that preliminary budget as well.
Motion for a 10-minute break, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we have the folks from LA here that have been waiting all morning to listen to the press this week.
Do we have a motion for 10-minute break? No second. We'll continue on with item C, investment committee meeting, report to Taos County, Boris Vayat, this year 2018, third quarter meeting, presented by our treasurer this weekend's meeting.
Good morning. Commissioner, manager, attorney, and junior audience. Before you, I am, I have presented the third quarter investment report. And in attendance on April 25th, 2018, at 3:30 PM, some members are Susan Kate Trichio, the treasurer president, Paul Sam, State Department Chief Deputy Treasurer President, Marianne Gonzalez, accountant, present, Giandro Portabel, manager, present, Hubert Martinez, financial director, present, Jim Fambro, commission chair, absent, Rose Vargas, US Bank, office manager, present. But we, as the treasurer presented, was my analysis of the treasurer's report. And I have included as part of that report, and if at any time anyone wants a packet of what I presented to the investment committee, you are very welcome. You can call me in or come on my office and I will go over it for you. But actually, I think it's going to benefit this, this meeting also because if you look at the Taos County General Fund account, the graph that I have provided for you, but also the numbers, and I believe that the manager mentioned the cash balance, the excess cash balance and the reserves, those two were discussed. And as of the end of March, the cash balance was $6,977,788.89. The recorded reserves are $2,911,355.25. So the remaining balance is $4 million, was $1,503,333.63. So what we have invested from the general fund is $3,250,000. So the additional reserve, I mean, investments that we have over reserves is $338,644.75. So I always indicate what we would carry, if we carried a 412 reserve, identify that dollar amount here, which is $970,451.75. So the remaining balance is what you have in excess fund balance. And I believe that that is what the manager alluded to, if need be, when a transfer could be made out of the excess fund balance. So on the next page, you have the investment monthly report. And from that, you'll see that out of the general fund, we have $3,250,000 invested as of March period. It has yielded in interest $47,994.16. And we have money invested in the cash balance of the USDA 411 fund. And we have $750,000 invested. It's yielded $3,717.16. The next, on the next page, we have the money from the end of general fund. And we have $1,565.16 invested and that has yielded $6,338 in interest. And what we've also done in this report is have the finance director give us our third quarter monthly report, I mean, third quarter report. And it opens up to discussion that, and that we have between the treasurer and the finance and the manager too, and for some good dialogue. And we just look at the different areas or anything that comes up that we have questions on. So it's really, really been a good committee to have, not just for investment purposes, but for the financial relationship between the manager and the finance to make sure that we have the components that are in the investment policy required ones and which are, you know, the liquidity that we need to be able to run from the county and yet have money invested to, or it will have, it will produce money for us instead of just sitting in the, in the funds. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Chairman. So the six-month CDs, or rather, two-year, two-year CDs should be around two and a half now.
Excuse me, sir, again?
Two-year CDs should be paying around two and a half percent.
Um.
Per annum?
Yes, it appears so.
Pretty close to that. That's what it's at right now. So that's about 25 grand a year per million invested. What is it after fees?
We are not getting fees at this time here. There are concession fees that are absorbed through the bank relationship and the broker that we have.
Great. So it's net 25 grand to us.
Correct.
Per million invested. And that's going up?
Yes.
That will be going up. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Chairman.
What's the total for excess cash balance?
As of, as of March, the excess cash balance after the 412 reserve is $3,889,81.89.
Thank you. And the money of, we've invested the excess cash, some of the excess cash balance from previous years or this year, when are those CDs, I mean, when can you cash in on those?
Just a moment, ma'am. I think we need to go back. We're not, we're investing the reserves.
Yes, that's what I mean.
And we're investing the reserves, and which is the $2,911,355. But then in addition to make up the 3 million, the 3 million, 250,000, the excess, out of the, out of that, the general fund is $338,644. So that, if you add those to that, it's a 3.2 million. And, but the excess fund balance is, when you take all of those numbers, is the $3,888. That is the excess.
So the one.
Not reserve. They're the excess fund balance.
Okay. So the one, the amount that we've invested, which is from reserves, when, if we had an emergency situation, or when do those come due, or when can those be?
Actually, we have, Commissioner, we have, if you look at the, one of the, one of the CDs is up now in August, the next one, it's like every six months. So we'll look at that. But at any time, if we really, really need the money, then we look at it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, at this time, commissioners, I ask that, because that's all, pretty much of everything that was public oriented. I do want to let you people know, I think you were here for the resolution 2018-21 that did pass by a work line. Okay. So at this time, I entertain a motion to change the agenda to go into closed session and ask that, in addition to us being here from the Bay of Los Angeles, that we have our assessor, Mr. Pedro Montoya, and possibly Paul Montoya, check over as well. Hold. Second. Motion, second, to go into closed session, item 16, official staff dated, per call.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos. Chairman Fambro.
Mr. Chair, motion to come back into regular session.
So.
Second. Motion, second, to come into regular session, per call.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes.
Mr. Ayew, could you give us a report of the executive session?
Mr. Chair of Commissioners, there was potential litigation discussed. No action was taken, and we remain within compliance of our duties under the Joe Libby Act.
Motion to accept Mr. Ayew's report.
So move to second. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Special Gagos?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 13, contracts agreements and we use a minute's approval of First Amendment to Memorize an Agreement Between Towns County and Towns Health Systems as item 18. Mr. Chairman, I think you do this from here. Simply put, there was an error in the bill of duty amount on the Friday, July 1. That was caught by our Treasurer. So this is just correcting the 1.25, which was an error, back to the 1.0. And that's the only change. Right. So if that was where the confusion, that I heard. We just wanted to clarify that before there's any confusion, further confusion, I guess.
Okay. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second to approve the First Amendment to the Memorizing Agreement Between Towns County and Towns Health Systems. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Special Gagos?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes.
Item B is approval of agreement for juvenile resident confinement between County of Santa Fe and Towns County.
I'll do that.
Chairman, based on our discussion earlier today, that's essentially the agreement that we're entering into with Santa Fe County to be able to house our, our juveniles going forward. It's pretty standard, it's very similar to the same kind of agreement we have for adults. The, I guess, the court of factory compensation is $185 per day for referred individual. Any further questions?
How many we have here from Towns County roughly, nine?
Last year, we were just under 40 kids the entire year. So when we did the math, it would cost us roughly, at this, $185. I think it would have cost us roughly $90,000 just for housing the kids that we had last year. That doesn't include transport costs to get a math point, which is roughly another 20, 25, I'd estimate.
Move to approve.
I'll second, Mr. Chief.
Okay. Motion to second to approve the agreement for the juvenile resident confinement, for juvenile resident confinement between County of Santa Fe and Towns County. Clerk Colerole.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart?
Yes.
Special Gagos?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes.
Item 14 is outdated, Commissioner, on various sides affecting Towns County. Mr. Corlum.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't have a lot of married reports, so I'll go through my other items before moving on to what's published. I mentioned my meeting with Secretary Jacobson is postponed until tomorrow. So I still intend to make that meeting. I invited Mr. Eric Modis of CYFD and Mr. Rachel Cox of CED to attend with me. I think it's important to kind of demonstrate our, our ability to work with the nonprofits, add the other state agencies, the community. So I believe both of them are going to attend also. I wanted to thank our senior program for the recognition, the senior recognition notch, I was held off Friday. They did a great job. It was at the Pofis Igano. I feel like our seniors really enjoyed the date. I wish we could recognize them more often, but I think they really enjoyed the, the meal, the festivities. I want to thank Shawna, Monica, Modis, our bond for really putting in the work and organizing it, and it was a great turnout. Myself and Mr. Hoddamian actually attended, and it's kind of highlighted one of those perks I talk about with this job, to be able to go hang out with our seniors and enjoy lunch with them and see them being recognized here. Yeah, I hope, I hope I get there. So it was a great, great bunch, and I want to thank us senior staff. Next item I wanted to bring to the Commissioners' attention, our July meetings. Our, kind of, based on the movement that we made in June, we may want to consider moving our July meetings as well. Moving our June meeting to the second meeting is on the 26th, I believe, and we would then have a follow-up on July 3rd. That would be the first meeting, the day before holiday. So I'd like to suggest that maybe we move our July 3rd to the 10th and July 17th to the 24th, if, if we're okay with that. And then I also do want to ask for a May 22 special meeting in order to adopt the funding budget or the preliminary budget as well as to do LUR work study.
And can we, I have a clerk, do you need a candidacy meeting?
Yes, there's all, thank you.
Thank you, Brett, thank you.
June 1st would need a request from our clerk to do the candidacy meeting.
No, you need.
Eight, I'm sorry.
Would the first be that would be good?
Yeah, that would be, that would be good.
Can the clerk, I'll give it, what's candidacy? Who can propose candidacy?
Can I tell you what?
What candidacy, none yet. For candidacy.
You don't want me to tell you.
Could you say the July meeting dates again you're proposing?
I'm proposing July 10 to replace the 3rd, July 24 to replace the 17th. Now potentially a special meeting on the 31st to adopt the final budget if we weren't able to do it on the 24th.
The 22nd is the work study on the LUR.
Yes, I'd like to request that we do the work study on the 22nd. We have hope to do it today, but she has around a full afternoon with budgets, so.
That's the 22nd, maybe, right?
Yes. So next Tuesday, propose a special meeting to adopt the budget and do the LUR work study. Then we'll ask for a special meeting on July 8th, I mean, June 8th, to do the candidacy on the election. And then we'll do our normally scheduled meeting, June 13th.
What time is the schedule by the calendar?
Yes, we'll definitely update the calendar. I think we've already updated it with the June meetings. We just need to get the, anything in July.
At what time are you thinking of the 22nd?
I was thinking 9 o'clock is normal, unless that doesn't work for the Commission. You can always, I anticipate we'll probably be together three to four hours. I think the adoption of the budget should go relatively quick after today's work study, but the LUR work study may take a couple hours.
I can't be here until between 9:30 and 10:00, I have to try.
Can we propose 10 o'clock on the 22nd?
Or I'll just come. I don't want to make, then can we answer as a Commissioner?
10 works for me, I don't know about you guys. 10 is fine. Okay. I'd be in this. Don't we have a meeting either anymore or not?
Not yet.
Change up. A new Commissioner won't change up.
So May 22nd, we'll go ahead and announce the 10 o'clock special meeting, June 8th. Are we okay with a 9 o'clock for the candidacy?
It's not big enough.
So can I propose 9 o'clock for June 8th for the candidacy? That is typically a pretty quick meeting, so yeah, I think it will be 15, 20 minutes.
Unless it's an interesting election result type of thing.
Don't stay.
We have the utmost confidence in it. Okay. And then I think if, for the July meetings, I'll bring that officially back on May 22nd meeting, I'll have an official request to move the July meetings so that, so the public can be aware of it and, and act upon it. If that's all, if there's any questions about the meeting dates, Commissioner Romero requests if we'll get the calendar out basically.
What do Brandon can make at 22nd?
Okay. Yeah, yes.
Moving on to my next item, we did receive a letter from the Village of Cuesta with a request for a few different vehicles. One request is for a long portion of vehicle, and another request for a potential public works vehicle. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. We've been talking with Sheriff O'Griff, and I can believe that there may be at least one or two older sheriff's vehicles that we may be able to get over to the village. And we're looking at our public works inventory right now to see if there's something that we could potentially partner with the village. I guess you guys have some bad luck with the police vehicles, and so.
Yeah, we, the Village of Cuesta had an incident the over a week ago where somebody here issued a brand. We're, I mean, we've got plenty for new vehicles coming up, but anything that, that could help, that could really, they're going to.
So we're definitely looking at that, and we'll let, let you know as soon as we figure out what we have available to the village. We'll bring that back to the Commission for basically a removal from our asset and transfer it to the village.
You have to do the DSA.
I believe if the value is still over 5,000, I think the units, I'm sorry, the units you may get may have value below 5,000, so I'm not sure.
You take your time, it's, it's, it'll come back a little bit.
It will be a quist and ready to be used as a, as a police vehicle, but I believe we're looking at some of the old, the old eights or some of the 11 vehicle, trucks, the old eights, Chevy, the, their poppers. We have a few of those. We'll try and get to the best one of, of that era.
The best of the worst.
They're not bad, they're just, we have, we have a number. We've been fortunate enough to go to transition some of our feet into newer vehicles, and so there are a few that still have some life to them.
Give them enough of the old ones, and they, they can sell these crap and have it up. Whatever the county wishes to, we could take the scrap.
So that's all I really have on my, my ideas. I start reading questions before I move on to the next published item.
I don't know if I should give this an announcement or if we just do it now with a couple of items. If there's any way Solid Waste could put bigger signs in the various locations, especially in Chami Sal, people are still throwing a lot of cardboard into the landfill. And I don't know if a flyer would help or just a larger sign, but, you know, cardboard has the highest return right now. It's gone up. So we want to make sure we get all the cardboard out of the landfill. So if there's any way, we've got the reuse center by Miss the San Cristobal that occasion, just watch people throwing cardboard into the dumpsters. So if that, if there's any way you could do that. And then I'll just bring up some of the other things under announcements. But the cardboard, the signs would be really helpful or something to let people know, maybe even in a solid waste bill flyer or something to get the word out, because people aren't, aren't really utilizing the recycling of cardboard.
Thank you. We'll look into that.
That's the only thing that we really make plenty of.
So there's no other questions. The next item on the Landes report is the Joint Powers Agreement concerning regional economic development within the enchanted circles. So the IGC has been meeting, talked about a more formal agreement of the bodies. And this is what has been proposed and brought forward to the IGC. We're not making a decision today. I wanted to introduce the JPA to the board and make sure that all of you have the ability to review it and have any, if you have any concerns after today, we can talk to you. I think the one issue that I want to bring to light is the idea that, because we're the county and the rest of the members are basically municipalities that, that named the county, the city administrator, city manager, and the mayor as the representing body or individuals with the county, they assumed that we would use the chairman and the manager. So that's the one thing that I, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, but I thought the board made, and the board may want to have some change to that language. So really, I'm just introducing it to the full board. I'll give you the opportunity to read it at your leisure and get back to any concerns, questions, suggestions, and we'll bring it back at a later time for adoption. We don't have too many concerns.
What's your recommendation on that issue, Chairman and Manager?
I think the purpose of it, as I understood it from the IGC members, was to have someone with the ability to make a decision or to really have the ability to kind of stamp and say this is what the board wants to do. Because of our makeup as a county and a commission, no one member really has that ability. Nobody is like a mayor on this board. So to me, I don't know if that's necessary to put it into the box of only the chairman. To me, I don't know if it matters one way or the other. Quite honestly, I think the municipalities need to understand that we don't have anyone that serves in that role like a mayor. And so to me, I don't, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but I do see that could potentially be a sticky point.
So I just wanted to, you just say, including the language, Chairman or a designated appointee by the.
That seems to be the fairest way. I think that's basically what we've been doing, and I think if we suggest that change, I'll see whether the Commissioners have a problem with that.
I'm good with that. I'm sure the Commissioner. Like, sir. Sorry. I just think that the way it's kind of formulated for the IGC and for all these joint powers agreements between our most parties, that any project is going to be big enough that it's going to have an effect on whole county or all members are going to have to make a decision whether it's going to be a road project or economic drought. So it's not something I would want any of the Commissioners to feel it. It wouldn't have a say. It would just be, you know, before the chairman or the appointed person at that meeting voted, this board would already have had the opportunity to say, in favor of it or denied. So it's just one of those things that just doesn't, it's not going to have a whole lot of, you know, they just kind of meet and then expect the chairman or appointed person to make a decision and that be the decision for the Commission.
Right. And I agree with that.
Because I said landfill, they want an accounting decision right away or something like that. Thank you. Bishop Blackheart? Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that's the way it'll work, you know, whoever the representative is. And the other thing to keep in mind is that the IGC is not an illegal entity in any regard. I mean, it was at one point, but that's long since gone. This actually creates a legal entity that gives you some additional options that the IGC doesn't have. And I think it'll work, if it goes through, I think it'll work well. The North Central to those EDA funds that are so critical. One of the things to keep in mind is that there's provisions of the JPA for hiring staff, but none of that is anticipated because you've got Roman Mexico, that nonprofit, that Laura has hired, and they are going to be contributing staff. So that's really a good free resource that's going to accompany this if it comes to.
So I'd be curious, Mr. Chairman, if COFAK feels the same way that if we included language, Chairman or an, or an appointee, if they feel that way. And also, who would be the fiscal agent? I guess that would be determined after everything's in place.
Yeah, we had, we threw that around with the meeting of managers, and I think we took out specifying who that is right away. I think we talked about per project basis, determining that on a project basis. So if it's really the main recipient of the support, just the Village of Cuesta or, or saying, me, allow them to be fiscal agent, that was a topic of discussion, and we kind of wanted to leave opportunity and not name one individual entity as that fiscal agent at this time.
I have to reread the JPA. I thought it named the fiscal agent, but maybe it clarifies it is per project.
It says here, selection of fiscal agent, and the parties being led by majority will order the parties to serve as the fiscal agent. If and where the party is determined it to be advantageous or necessary, the selected fiscal agents shall serve until otherwise determined by majority will order the parties, or sufficient capacity exists within the ECCOG to serve as its own public fiscal agent. So that was under the administrative, administrative or fiscal agent.
Oh. Bishop Blackheart? Thank you, Chairman. So this building inspector thing is going to get really serious here. I guess there was one, we don't, we had one building inspector only, and we used to have three. And I guess there was a applicant who actually met the certifications, which are so hard to find, and got hired out from under us by his town street valley. Is that true?
That's how I understand it. Last time we opened it up, we had three applicants. One of them had the certs by the time they went to go.
Right, so lesser certification would allow them to inspect, inspect plans, but not allow them to go out and enter the actual inspections.
So still a very high priority, definitely under that concern, we are definitely concerned as well, planning department is spread thin right now, they're working really, really hard. And Mr. Romero is very rarely there for the three moments, she's always about the county doing inspections, one after another, after another, so. Thank you.
All right. Next item, my 15 A's business could be considered a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really would like to resolve a couple road issues that have been, our, my constituents have been waiting for an answer, that that's the bias of the heel issue, and you probably already saw the email, and the WIT road issue, and there was some talk that WIT didn't comply with all the property owners that would want speed homes, and however, the resolution if the Commissioner wants to bring the issue forward, they can do so and forego the property requirements. So I want to have this resolved. My constituents have been waiting ever since the previous public work administrator, Vice Nido, and I don't think we need to take a vote. So at some point, I'll bring that back, depending on when the constituents are available to be at the meeting.
Anything else, Commissioners? And we announced, we have two, maybe three of us are invited, maybe only two of us will show up to the candidates farm. We have proposed that as a form, potential, we're not talking to each other.
No, you know, you don't have to. What I think is nice just is you make a note that there may be, for all those things where you're all going to be there, but you're not sitting as a body, it's just that there's going to be three Commissioners present, but no county business.
And then I haven't heard of any other dates that we would all be somewhere, and that's the only form I believe can do.
Chair, was that way?
I don't know what I had last item, it was a lady's pretty.
Which one is this?
House News? No. This, the one on the 21st is sponsored by House News and Kid Carson, or somebody, I don't know.
Might show up, just to see.
So then we should go and post your form numbers. Okay. Next item is item 17.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have a concern, just to mention, pinasco fiespas have been changed to June 14th. So that's really early, and I don't know, June 14th through 17th, so I don't know if we want to have a float. I'm not sure if it's election year, if that's something I could participate, being on the float, or, so I don't know the rules on that, but just so you know, in case we do want to have some kind of a float, or some truck in there, it's June 14th through 17th, so I'm not sure, Sunday is the parade, I'm not sure what date that falls on. The other thing is, I would like to request permission from the Commission to speak on the crisis triage rule hearing, which is May 30th, and it'd be nice if the Commission could look at the rules and get back with me on how they feel about these proposed rules, because I know one of the areas is they want 24/7 nurse all the time, and in a rural area, that's not practical for us. So that would be one of my items of why I don't think these crisis triage rules are going to work to our benefit, and it's going to be a detriment to rural areas. So I'd like to go down maybe with Tammy or Leandro, or, and be able to testify at that hearing.
Okay. My, Mr. Chairman, I have just an announcement, Questa does have their healing fields on Memorial Weekend, you'll be invited, and I'll make sure to acknowledge you, you're in the audience.
Yeah.
I promise, Mr. Chairman. We also had a, we also had the San Cristobal ribbon cutting firehouse on Saturday. So it was a good day, which is a very good, a full station, a beautiful station, they have a lot deserving, and they used it immediately on Sunday, but on Friday, so we just...
In the area?
Right down the street, right down the street, this was the street down here. So a good day was, the representative, I was mentioning that he was to get a fire truck for, I was on the truck, basically, so let's see if I can reach him, if I can push through. In addition to that, I'm looking for a date, maybe any of you Commissioners, keep your afternoons available, ask your staff to be able to consider a ribbon cutting out there in line for the community service slash fires. I'll go to that. You evolve the pilots in the 24 years? Yeah, so it's good. And so I have delivered a announcement, something, and I have a motion. Thank you, your time, motion.
Thank you. I'll second. About the various AI? Hi. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.